Yeah. They actually, they actually let, they actually.
Oh.
Yeah, Glenn.
Oh, hello, hello.
Yeah, let me just think, sorry.
All right.
Hey, Javu.
Is Angela online?
Eric, is Angela online?
I'm here.
Not anymore.
She have the one.
Oh, all right.
Yeah, sure.
Are you ready?
Okay.
Well, we've got a brief full agenda, so let's get started, if that's okay. Good afternoon and welcome to the 4:00 PM work session of October twenty-four, or twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-five. Please note that Councilmember Blair and Councilmember Richie, I'm assuming, will be joining us shortly.
There's Mr. Richie.
There's Mr. Richie right now, and that Councilmember Chuburka's online. If you want to say hello, that'd be great.
Hello, I'm here, thank you.
Fantastic. Let's look through our, it's really loud. Let's look through our city council meeting. Any questions about tonight? You're gonna do the, we need planning?
Yep.
Got a couple of consent items?
Just to back up, the, we do have troop ten seventeen here tonight to do the flag ceremony.
Fantastic.
And this is part of their requirements for their communications merit badge to attend a city council meeting, so they'll be in the meeting for what I expect to be duration, and they will have one of the young men say the, lead us in the pledge.
Right.
They hadn't decided who yet. I, I just, I'll just ask them when I, when I see him there.
Thank you, Rich.
Assistant Scoutmaster Paul Byrd.
Okay.
Will be with this group. Right.
All right, then we've got a few things. The renewable energy, or the Renewable Communities Agency Board appointment, Ogden City Advisory Committee appointment, and the Public Arts Project funding reports from Planning Commission. Any questions about that? The wall, proposed Walt Avenue corridor plan.
But can I address that briefly, Chair White? So, we're gonna hear from any later in the work session on this, because they do have some things they need to discuss with you about some issues they're having with this plan. And maybe, they may be recommending that you postpone it to a later date action, but we, because it was noticed for tonight, we're recommending that you still go ahead and take public comment, but I suggest we go ahead and go through the, after we do this, go through the work session and then take whatever remaining time is to talk about the Wall Avenue. All right, any other questions? Mount Lewis, and then the Water Cross Connection. Free zone of Mount Lewis Community Plan, and then the Water Cross Connection ordinance. Any other questions than those? All right, then, it looks like we've got a lot of Pioneer Day people here, so.
How can you tell?
I don't know, it's blue shirt. The Foundation wants to come up and give us their annual report, and welcome Steve Handy.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Thank you, thank you. Thank you very much, Madam Chair. My name is Steve Handy. I have the distinct privilege and opportunity to serve as the Chair of the Ogden Pioneer Days Foundation. We thought it was very, very, very important and prudent for us to come here tonight to provide for you a just a quick annual report, and we'll, we'll try to be brief. I'm joined here tonight by four of our vice chairs. We have Rick Davis, who is the Vice Chair of Rodeo Operations, Brett Ghee, who is our advertising, marketing, and all, everything's, everything all web and social media. We have Shannon Noble, who is our sponsorship director, and I wanted to give a shout out to Shannon. She just received a neat advancement appointment at Weaver State as the, the Development Director in Athletics.
Oh.
Congratulations. Very, very, very neat, very, very neat, very proud of her. And General Pat Condon is with us, who has military and community relations and volunteers, and so, thank you for allowing us to come tonight, number one. Thank you for allowing us the opportunity to dress western.
Anytime.
Yeah, anytime, so it's very fun for us, but thank you very much, and marvelous, wonderful things are happening in Ogden. It's not lost on any of us, I'm sorry to say this. I mean, some, you know, very unfortunate things over the last couple of weeks, and we won't dwell on that. I, I would assume that that several of you lost sleep over things like that, and you have marvelous public service and first responders from this city, and they're doing all the candidates. It's, it's terrible, but great things are happening. Drove past the Wonder Block coming along, you hear a lot about that, what you've done with Marshall White Center is, is, is amazing, is amazing. I keep pressing that off. And it's not lost on us also that three of you are of reelection, ballots are in the mail. I've read all of your profiles. You had, you had one yesterday and today, Councilman Richie, and I, I like what you said. You said it takes a long time. It does, things don't happen with warp speed. Remember saying that? And you know, the growth of Ogden Pioneer Days even after ninety-one years hasn't happened with warp speed. It's taken time, and certainly Councilman Myers remembers those years, those formative years after privatization. It was, it was certainly a, a, a struggle. And we're in marvelous shape today. I wanted just to draw your attention to some things in your packet. If we have an annual report, I'm gonna highlight some things here and ask the Vice Chair down with some things. And we've given you also, we kind of have a revised mission statement. There's Councilman Blair, revised mission statement, some things we've worked on. And you will see, I want to draw your attention also to, the first time ever, we have an economic impact report that was provided and helped by Weaver State. We'll see, and we'll talk about that, and then there's some preliminary two thousand and twenty-six, the schedule of events, but you know, here on the cover, here is this little Stetson Wright. He's the, he's the king of the Cowboys, and the five rides showed up on Fort Rick on the twenty-third, and just wowed the crowd, and you know, hey, he only worked for sixteen seconds and he got twenty-six thousand dollars. And ride a bull, and, and a bronc, but pretty amazing. That photo inside of Monica Test at our event, jumping the bowl that night, the bulls that night was amazing, but you know, you can see here that the, the attendance, the attendance, those numbers kind of fluctuate, Brett, a little bit, but that's about what we came up with, and those ticket revenues, we want to let you know, this was as of, we've sent this to all of our hundred and twelve sponsors. We want you to know that we had an update in, in our finances, and we can actually report revenues of seven hundred and seventy-nine thousand, and our sponsor revenues, really, six hundred and forty-four thousand dollars. And great thanks to Shannon and her team, mainly her, who is able to do this, and people because Pioneer Days, what it has become, they stand almost in line to sponsor with us, and repeat, and repeat, and repeat, and repeat. You can see these payouts, and I want Rick in a minute to talk about this big thing about six hundred and thirteen thousand dollars, why that's important, why we think that's what we do. Five hundred volunteers, all of the meals that are served, the incredible things that are happening with our website and social media, thanks to Brett, his growth, and his team, what they have done over the years. There's a great photo of the major flag, you know, the Brett Taylor flag that night on the Patriot and Military Night, and thanks to General Condon and his efforts to get the F-35 flyover. That doesn't happen all the time. That's pretty spectacular, and there's our, our famous, our famous site to the east. We did really well with concessions, and just to tell you that our percentage, the committee, I think it was about a hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars that the committee derives from those overall sales. You can see the numbers in the parade, and of course, you probably saw the standard examiner puts out a little survey, and best city celebration, best rodeo, of course, best parade, event concessions, only number two. But some, some, some really great, great things. And then I want to tell you about that we've tried for several years on an economic impact effort, and have tried to figure that out, and finally got with Dr. Gavin Roberts, the Economic Chair at Weaver State, some of you know. And he, he helped us. We developed a survey. We had at the stadium, we had, you know, some posters with a QR code. We got about seventy-five people to respond, and then we had a separate survey with our contestants, and we had about thirty-five of them respond, and then Brett, where is he? He said, Steve, we're gonna do what's called, I mean, he's, I'm gonna call this drip marketing, something like that, where we have, how many do we have in our email database? About three thousand?
Three or four thousand.
Three or four thousand. Anyway, sent, sent the survey to those, to that response, and it was but four hundred and twenty-two. So then the, the, the Economics Department, they married the, the numbers together, ran some economic formulas, and pretty great that you can look on that back page there and see a four point seven million dollar economic impact this of Ogden Pioneer Days. I mean, that's pretty, pretty amazing. It's something we've never known before, and, and really, really great, but I think it's really interesting to see where our attendees come from. No surprise to you, any of us, that the bowl comes from Weaver County. We have been trying for a lot of years, Brett, all of us, to grow that outside of Weaver County, haven't we? We're, we're trying really hard to, to do that, to expand that, and you can see what the attendees thought, and what they, what they think of the, you know, the ticket prices. People are always gonna say something's too expensive, right? But our ticket price, I mean, it's, it's an average ticket of twenty-five dollars. I mean, where can you get three or four hours of entertainment like that, Councilman? You, you can't get that. I mean, it's, it's just amazing what happens. And it's just, it's just, it's just really gratifying. So you can spend some time with that and look at the methodology and some things that happened, that happened there. Want you to know, too, that we had a special event, so we're trying to do, and we've always had the five nights, you know, the twenty-fourth, every signs around the city, the week of July twenty-fourth. We tried, tried to do some other things. We added this Bulls Bronx and Bands. It was an idea that Rick brought to us, and others expanded on. And it was a hard thing to promote, wasn't it? It was a really hard thing to promote. And we lost a little money on it, but it wasn't devastating. We're gonna recover from that. We can handle it. And we are planning to do that in twenty twenty-six. We're gonna, we're gonna go again. We're gonna try it again. And the people who were there, they just, they thought it was amazing. I just want to thank, and then I just wanted just a minute or two, and if you have any questions for us, too, but just thank some amazing, you're, the amazing team that works with us. I mean, Councilman Myers remembers those years, and when I worked with his dad, you know, everything was on the city. We had a nice volunteer committee thirty, thirty-five years ago. We had a nice volunteer committee, but we didn't have any real skin in the game. And we have skin in the game, but we couldn't do this without Ogden City's participation. You take, you take the great Monty Stewart here, and unbelievable what he and his team do. I said, give me some names. Ashley Bachwald, Special Events, Jacob Chadwick and his crew from Cemetery, Ryan Parent, and Damian Reeves. Just amazing what they do to help us. And of course, Lieutenant Glenn Bus and his, and his, the first responders, just amazing. I called him today, and I said, what's the name of that guy that's always wearing the cowboy hat? It was Rich King. And Rich was in the fire department, but he was always, I thought he was one of, one of your cops, and just the great guy retired on July twenty-fourth, didn't he, Glenn? So really, really, really great to us, just tremendous what he did for us, and so many other of, of your people here, Fire Chief Mike Slater and his team from, thank you, I keep doing that, huh? I, who keep, and his, and his team were just so great to us. I wanted, just for a minute, to, anything from the vice chairs that you would like to say? Please certainly step up. General Condon has been with us a long, long time, and just, would you just step up and tell the Council what your plans are, sir? A little bit. He's gonna stay with us, but he's gonna, you know.
Retirement plans?
Yeah.
Well, first, let me just say, we appreciate the opportunity to come share with you some information about Ogden Pioneer Days. As Steve mentioned, my responsibility as the Vice Chair of Military and Community Relations is to work with the base, because we rely on the folks at Hill a great deal, or a lot of the volunteers that we have, particularly those that deal with the crowd in, in terms of ushering and seating, and dealing with any issues that any of our patrons might have. And as mentioned, we've been fortunate in recent years to be able to have an F-35 flyover to kick off as part of the opening ceremonies, Military Appreciation Night at the rodeo, and I don't know how many rodeos across the country, there were what, some six hundred or so rodeo? Professional Rodeo Cowboys Association has a part in, and there aren't very many of those that have an F-35 flyover as a part of their rodeo activity. So we, we worked the relationship with Hill a, a great deal, not only for that, but also working with the leadership out there to get the number of volunteers that we need. And there are a lot of other sources that we use for volunteers as well, as the brochure indicates, roughly five hundred or so volunteers. We couldn't put on the rodeo and all the associated events without the volunteers, and so we greatly appreciate the participation of the community in that way, and we've got volunteers that have been with the rodeo longer than Steve and I have been a part of the rodeo. They love the rodeo. They love coming back. They love being a part of that. I've been on the committee for roughly fifteen years. I don't remember exactly the year that I started, but I'm at the point now where I think it's time to pass the torch, if you will. So I've shared with Steve that next year is gonna be my last year as a Vice Chair on the committee, and I have found another retired general officer who is an Ogden young man, not quite so young anymore, but a lot younger than I am. Anyway, he's a retired Brigadier General. He was part of the Air Force Reserve. Graduated from Ben Loman High School, also has an degree from Weaver State, and then spent a full career in the Air Force, and he loves rodeo, and like I said, has a great affinity for Ogden and its people and so forth. Anyway, he's gonna serve as my understudy next year, and then when I step down, he'll take over for good in, in two thousand and twenty-seven. His name is Max Stitzer. Some of you may know him. Max is involved in a lot of activities already here in the community since his retirement, and one of our concerns was, would he have time to do what he needs to do with Ogden Pioneer Days based on all of the other things that he's involved in? But he's assured us that he will, and so we look forward to bringing Max on board at the beginning of this coming year, and then I'll turn the reins over to him a year from January. It's been a great, great privilege and pleasure for me to be associated with Ogden Pioneer Days over the last several years. We, I didn't grow up as a rodeo person, if you will, but I really do enjoy the rodeo and enjoy all of the activities associated with Ogden Pioneer Days. So it's been a, a, a like I said, a great privilege and a great pleasure to be a part of this wonderful organization, and I look forward to continuing to be a part in some way, but not as a Vice Chair.
We're gonna keep you on the foundation, General. I wanted just, Madam Chair, a couple more things. Rick, would you just step up and and, and, and Rick is very well plugged into the rodeo community and the industry. He was elected to the Association of Rodeo Kids, and so this is a smaller organization, one of the premier rodeos, and he's able to provide to us incredibly. Where does Ogden Pioneer Days stack? Please tell them the answer to that.
Well, that's a really good question, Steve. You know, the Professional Rodeo Cowboys Association sanctions just over eight hundred, eight hundred and twenty-four events. Seven hundred and twenty-seven of those are actual full-on rodeos. It looks like, we'll know probably within the, the next ten days, but Ogden is going to come in twelfth to fourteenth in the entire, really the world. I mean, there's rodeos in, in Brazil, Serbia, so we're, we're pretty fortunate to have that. Ogden is very well recognized in the industry. You know, those top fifteen, there, there are names like Pendleton and Cheyenne, the premier rodeos that everybody knows about, and Ogden is now in that group, and that's a huge honor for the city. When, when the contestants talk about coming to this rodeo, they don't say we're going to Pioneer Days. They're coming to Ogden. And they recognize Ogden as a city that, that really is such a great partner for us. Just last week, Cowboy Channel featured, there's a contestant, his name's Rocker Steiner. He's pretty edgy. He's one of the, the big stars in rodeo right now. They actually came to Ogden and filmed him, and there was a program on the Cowboy Channel, and there's about a fifteen-minute segment that.
It's called Hell on Wheels.
Hell on Wheels. It featured Ogden, and they did a phenomenal job, and, and so we're getting a lot of recognition in the industry, and we appreciate. I do have to say, Monty, where are you at? This year, Monty's team is always phenomenal, and we're trying, when we're trying to get the stadium ready to go, there are lists after list of things that need to be done. Their team this year stepped up so far beyond what they've ever done, and they've always done phenomenal. They really raised the bar. Monty, I, I can't thank you enough, and I want the Council to know how much we appreciate
Yes.
their time and effort, because we could not do that without them.
Thank you, Shannon, or ready to add?
I think I would just second about Monty's.
Yes, about Monty. Thank you, Madam Chair. We'd be happy to answer any questions, but we'll be happy to tip our hats and let you get on with your agenda.
No, any, any questions or comments? This is awesome.
I just, I always want to just comment and say thank you, because this is an event that just, you know, makes me proud of Ogden and, and everything that goes, and all the, the work that goes together, and I I'm so embarrassed, I'm drawing a blank on the name of the gal who runs the Slack Breakfast and the dinners, and that's right.
Gina Black isn't here tonight, or one of her other vice chairs, but the committee underneath her.
Yeah, that's an incredible thing. I've had a chance to volunteer and, and help out, and she said we were doing omelets one morning. I was like, how in the world are we gonna do omelets for all these cowboys and cowgirls coming through, but she made it happen, and so yeah, just incredible effort, and, and love to see the economic impact. I also love seeing that there are students involved.
Yes.
When I was in the economics department, it was something to do with eyes, so I don't know why I didn't get a this cool of an assignment, so anyway. Thank you.
Any other comments? No, go ahead.
I just, again, want to say thanks to Steve and the committee. I'm so proud of Pioneer Days and what they've achieved and what they've accomplished over these past many years, and we just want to keep it rolling and, and keep it going, and thanks for your recognition of our city staff, because we see the great effort that they do, both to help with the parade and security and medical follow-up. So, anyway, thanks for.
With all the, like I said, with all the weighty matters you're dealing with, this, this is a amazing, fun time in July for all of us, and we want to, we're gonna do everything in our power to keep it that way, keep it going, but we're in good financial shape and planning for two thousand and twenty-six, so thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
All right. Thanks, you guys. Guys, guests.
Cowboys, cow.
Cowboys, yeah. Holes, holes. That's good.
Partners.
Partner.
We have some other.
Thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
All right, on to the next. We have I guess, Brandon, or do you want to, I guess, introduce this, but I think from Logan's, he's gonna talk about the stationary plan around the OGX.
No, you're good.
I'm just saying, my two favorite subjects in that, back-to-back order. The rodeo and stationary.
Yeah. I don't know if we're as cool as the Ogden rodeo, but yeah, so thank you for the opportunity. Very white, to talk a little bit about the OGX stationary plan. So we have Megan Moore online, and then Jake Young with our Logan Simpson team, so I'll let him take over, and then we can, yeah, answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Chair and Council. It's great to be with you. It's been a wonderful project. We've been working on it for eighteen months now going on in conjunction with the, the general plan, Plan Ogden, a number of open houses, online surveys. We've been out in the field. We've done lots of renderings, a lot of research, engineering, transportation, housing, all of that. We feel like we have a good plan, and we'd like to present, give you an overview. Megan is gonna go through the first part of the presentation, and then, and I'll pick it up.
Oh, she.
Is she online?
Sorry, yeah. Yeah. I'm promoted to panelist. I'm so sorry. Okay. She's got her hand raised. Yeah. Megan, you've been promoted to panelist.
It doesn't come with a pay increase.
We should get cake, at least.
Yes.
What'd you say?
Cake.
Cake.
Yeah, we should have cake.
Accept it on her. Can you accept, accept it on your end, Megan?
There we go. It looks like it worked.
Okay. Sorry about that.
There you are. Megan, are you there?
I am. Hi, everybody. Well, I'll just, I'm gonna just dive right into, to save some time or make up some time here. Uh, what we have is a relatively quick presentation. Um, I'll talk a little bit about the background and the overview of the project. And then Jake will talk a little bit about plan highlights, recommendation, and some of the next steps. Um, and who, who's controlling the screen here? Yeah, okay, we can go to the next one, even I think.
Go ahead.
So first of all, the purpose behind this plan, and you have other stationary plans already in place, so this isn't new to the city. Um, but there was taking a look at the stations along Harrison Boulevard and on Weaver State's campus. And part of this was really to, to help emphasize the BRT that's already in place. City and UTA, of course, have, have invested in, put funding into. And now is time to support that. So to increase ridership, supporting walkability, supporting additional housing at the station areas, which can also impact additional economic development at each station area and help create high-quality public spaces. So this kind of sets the stage for the plan itself. In addition to that, there's some state requirements that, that you, that you have to do this. But all Utah cities with fixed guideway have to prepare the stationary plan. So, and those stationary plans are defined within a quarter mile of those specific station areas. This one, in coordination with WFRC, we did a little bit differently. That because there were so many gaps between those quarter-mile radii along the stations, we kind of just covered the whole corridor. So it makes it a little bit more consistent along Harrison Boulevard uh as well. Uh, in addition to that, you also have to touch on housing, um, and sorry, sustainable environmental conditions, access to opportunities. So again, kind of looking at, at what the BRT serves, you know, is it jobs, is it education, additional services? And then allowing for choices and additional multimodal connect connectivity. So making sure that you've got bike ped connections, uh, other local bus connections, et cetera. Uh, and then why this area? So this is the area that, of course, isn't covered by a stationary plan quite yet. Uh, it goes, it highlights Thirty Second Street, Thirty Sixth Street, and then the three Weaver State Campus stations in Central Wildcat Village and D Event Center. Uh, the corridor obviously connects downtown with Front Runner and with Weaver State. So covers a lot of territory within the city. Uh, and right now, I, it's kind of this existing mix, right? So you've got Weaver State on the east side there, but then along the corridor itself, you have a lot of existing neighborhoods. And then a lot of commercial along the, the face of that corridor. Um, and really with the implementation of the BRT of service along Harrison, this really starts to be able to look at transformation of that corridor into transit-oriented opportunities. Looking at things like higher-density housing, mixed-use, additional commercial, additional employment, et cetera.
And, and why didn't you look at all the um stops again?
All the steps along OGX?
Yes.
Some of those are covered by other station areas already.
And, and in addition, it's because they're not a dedicated BRT where, where you have the, you know, the BR, the, the dedicated lane on Harrison. So that's why the state code required these ones. However, uh, for example, on Washington and also coming down on that, is that twenty? Twenty-fifth, th- those stations did not require per-state code.
Yeah, perfect. Um, and just as a note, if we do add more dedicated lane to one of the stations that is not currently ser- serviced by a dedicated lane, that would require a stationary plan.
You can continue, Megan.
Okay. And then this, right here, these numbers are something to celebrate. So the stationary plan has been run in conjunction with, of course, the Plan Ogden general plan because they are so interconnected and related. Um, but the, the comments and the engagement numbers that you've seen on both of these projects are really just phenomenal. I've been surprised every time we've come out for an event. Uh, your, your participants in workshops has just been off the charts. And thank you to most, if not all, council members I think I've seen at some of these events. So that's something to really celebrate as a community. And then just some of the things that we did specific for OGX was to post notifications at each OGX stations and on the buses to help promote some of that attendance. Uh, and then the last thing here before the vision and what helped identify the vision for this is some of the priorities that came up as part of that engagement was really to focus on this idea of walkability. Focus on housing choice that's not specific to the stationary. We've seen that, you know, again, in the general plan as well. So focusing on different types of housing from apartments to condos to looking at townhomes, et cetera. Really focusing on this idea of safe neighborhoods and that has to do with not just um, safe in regards to crime, but also safe movement through some of those communities. So looking at how to make them connected a bit better, how to make walking, biking around safer. And then this concept of mixed-use centers. So right now, you've first got a lot of commercial areas along the corridor. But looking at ways to kind of condense those into the station areas themselves, which kind of support them in economic base. Um, but also looking at integrating housing with uh commercial areas with restaurants, et cetera, in that same building. And then lastly, those priorities really led into the vision and framework for the plan. The overall vision being that connected, vibrant, and inclusive community. Again, this ties into Plan Ogden, so they really work with each other. And then four pillars for progress. So one, to support existing neighborhoods. Two, strengthen neighborhood and mixed-use centers. Three, to enhance walking, biking, and transit access. And then the last, to use resources wisely, and that includes water, air, energy, and infrastructure.
Thank you. Uh, so we're at a point where we can jump into what's in the plan. Uh, with, with the main item being land use. And you'll see the map in a second, but what we're proposing is mixed uses near the, the transit stations with residential and commercial and office and jobs, also community facility near the campus. Uh, in terms of intensity, we're looking at townhomes, student housing, cottage lots. Um, but also some higher uses at, right at the, the TODs, right at the stations. And then in, in the future, we anticipate some zoning changes, including some changes to existing zoning and then also new zoning. And this includes uh support for infill at those stations, uh accessory dwelling units. And then also just a number of adding housing diversity and thickening of the neighborhoods around.
And, and is that because of Plan Ogden more or Zone Ogden more? Or is that because of the, the stationary itself?
Yeah, I mean.
Plans just.
As far as the land use changes. Uh, yeah, mostly based on the uh input we've received from the community.
All of it.
Yeah, I mean, the stationary plan has been built off of the Plan Ogden.
Other two.
All the community maps. Yep.
Yeah, when, when we were doing the open houses, we had some tables focusing just on the stationary plans, giving specific input. And other tables that were looking citywide and, and that's kind of how we ran this. So we were always looking at both and, and it worked out well. So this is the north half of the proposed land uses. And so I'm gonna highlight some of these areas uh in the, the blue, blue-green color is mixed-use center. Um, that's where we'd see, you know, ver- vertical mixed-use potentially. Um, apartments or condos over retail and businesses. And then also across the street on the east side of Harrison, some medium density. And then transitioning back into the neighborhoods, uh, very minimal impact to the neighborhoods. Uh, and then going west from that station, also some medium density. And then as we go south, uh, we get into some higher density along Harrison, particularly on the west side. Uh, and then commercial on the east side in between. And then similar again, when we get down to Harrison and Thirty Sixth, also mixed-use in the blue-green color. And then some medium residential density on the southeast.
Um, before we go on, I, I, sorry, Angela, I.
No problem. No, and I'm sorry, I just, it's hard for me to know when to interrupt appropriately. And again, I appreciate so much allowing me to join virtually. I'm just, have a really bad cold. And so, um, I just have a quick question and, um, you might have already said this, but again, I have a cold, so I'm on a lot of cold medicine and I might have just missed it. And I know we've discussed this before in some of the other plans, but um, this doesn't apply to, I mean, the, the properties that are existing in these areas right now. Won't have to change anything right now. It's just that this would be opportunities available. Um, if any plans are made in the future, is that correct?
Correct. So the, the plan makes the recommendation on future land uses and when they change. And then the city would update the zoning. And when the, then when the property owner wanted to exercise their own property rights, there would be new additional options available that they could. You know, for, for example, at Thirty Second and, and Harrison, right now there's kind of a strip mall there a little bit.
Yeah.
Building.
Yeah.
And, and so, you know, right now commercials allowed there, but in the future, there could be additional options such as mixed-use. So that it doesn't force any changes, but just opens the door for those who wanna change. And there, of course, would be some economic incentives to do that.
Yes. I appreciate that. Yeah, and I just think that, you know, when people are hearing this, they might start to panic a little bit. So I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you so much.
Yeah, no, we appreciate that. Yeah, think of it more like a future land use map for the general plan. So it provides a recommendation, but ultimately it's the property owner that decides on uh proposing a rezone.
And, and the biggest land use changes, particularly on the corridor, the properties facing Harrison have the biggest change. And then as you go east or west, that, then uh change is less.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, I'm gonna move to this now.
The uh, between Thirtieth and Thirty Second on the east side, uh, the, the Harrison Boulevard. What does medium density look like in terms of, you know, what's gonna be allowed there? Um, and I partly just because I know that's just a, a row of just amazing trees that go up and down that.
Yeah.
And so if there's medium density that's proposed, is that put that in danger at all? I mean, obviously homeowner or landowners are gonna be able to do what they, they can, but I'm just curious what that might look like. How might, how that might impact, impact that stretch.
Impact the trees?
Yeah.
Uh, I know Barn is very particular on saving the nice, beautiful trees of, of Ogden. So, and I know the city's ordinance look at that, maybe you can chime in on that. Uh, medium density is more in the, in the townhome, two-to-three-story attached range. Um, I have worked on some projects in the past where giant trees, this was at Utah State University, the Aggie Rec Center. There was a, a nice big row of London plane trees, full maturity. And they built this beautiful uh rec center right behind it and saving all those trees. So it certainly could be done if you could get access behind, but someone would have to acquire multiple properties for that. But do you wanna talk about the, the tree ordinance and some of that?
Um, yeah, I mean, we definitely wanna save mature trees whenever we can. Um, these are all in the public right-of-way, right? Like in the park strip.
Right.
If I remember right. So um, my hope is that we would preserve those trees. Um, and yeah, like uh Jake said, the medium density that we would consider is, you know, anything between townhomes and small, single-family.
Thanks.
Thank you. Good question. Okay, now uh looking south, uh, we get more into the campus. Uh, the P, the Pink Area Community Facility Campus. Uh, that's really relying on Weaver State's plan and, and letting them uh exercise their own land use authority. Uh, we did have meetings with Weaver State and worked with them. Uh, this is a change from the original future land use from a couple uh months ago. Public input did not wanna see the city proposing uh density around D Event Center and some of those. So listening to public and also recognizing that the university will, will exercise their own land, their own land use authority. So that changed it more focused on community facility. Uh, they do have the Wildcat Village with some high density, you know, student apartments around that. And then o- on the east side of Harrison, that is mostly commercial. And then when we shift to the west side, that's where we pick up again the mixed, mixed-use. And, and then also some of that medium-density residential. And then also we hit the, the city park on the southwest.
Is that south of forty-six hundred? Isn't that basically student housing?
So, yeah, so on Weaver State's master plan, that's um, that's designed to actually become uh sports builds.
Okay.
So.
Okay.
Yep. You are correct. Currently it's student housing.
Student housing, yeah.
Okay. Uh, so speaking of housing, a big part of this is to provide affordability. Um, and particularly when you can have transit next to housing, that's when you can reduce that total cost of living. So huge advantage of that. Um, also, the plan promotes collaborating with developers, in particular to build units below the eighty percent area median income. Um, also, this plan promotes the ADU restriction lifted. And most of the city allows ADUs, uh, except for in the Mount Ogden area. Uh, this, this plan promotes ownership of units and also rental. So there is some of both there. And then the focus on moderate-income housing.
So can you speak to the importance of um below eighty percent AMI? Why is that a target?
Uh, so the, the, the state requirements for housing is that every city have a moderate-income housing plan. And that's between thirty percent area median income up to eighty percent. And so we look at what is the area median income per the average household? And then focus on, on reaching that. The lower you get, the ver- it becomes very difficult. And, and that's where subsidies really help out. But, but a lot of times near the eighty per- sixty to eighty percent, um, you can work with developers and, and smaller units, maybe not quite as expensive. And that's where you can hit that sixty to eighty percent area median income.
Yeah.
I thought in my reading, I had found uh moderate-income housing to be um defined as eighty to one-twenty percent of AMI? Am I mistaken in my understanding?
Percent or less.
Eighty or less.
The area median income.
Yeah.
All right.
In, in, in Utah, we have our own vernacular in terms of state code. And thirty to eighty percent is kind of that target range. I think that the below thirty, they're just saying, you're probably living on your parents or something like that in, in terms of affordability with, with a capital A, is, is that's kind of. And then above eighty percent, that's where a lot of times you'll hear the, the phrase attainable.
Yeah, so I would say eighty to twelve, hundred and twenty percent would be attainable housing.
Okay, thanks, Brandon.
And just to clarify, so uh the stationary plan requirement is part of the modern income housing bill. Um, House Bill four sixty-two. So that's why this is also part, or this is why it mentions eighty percent AMI. So it was originally part of that bill.
Okay, so this is a state requirement. Okay.
And the idea is the state spending billions of dollars on, on transit, you know, particularly the BRT here in Ogden. Let's try to have as much housing as reasonable near those stations. So that's very efficient.
Take a car out of the equation, it's even more affordable for the family that's there.
Yes.
Yep.
Do you have anything to add?
Follow-up.
Okay, great. Okay, uh, looking at transportation, obviously the, the BRT is, is the main player, player here in transportation. But also we're looking at uh complete streets for Harrison Boulevard. And when we talk about complete street, we're saying from building to building sidewalks, bike lanes when possible, transit. Um, in, in adjacent neighborhoods, having slower, safer routes, particularly on, on Tyler Avenue. Looking at having a bike path that's east of Harrison, a nice neighborhood. And then also uh mid-block crossings. Um, there, there are some very significant distances between the intersections. And so that's a part of this plan promoting that.
Can you, can you talk to, I think it was Safetown, uh, I think Commissioner Safetown's concerns about the mid-block crossings? Where, for the bikes? Like, was there a safety issue that he was concerned about or?
Hey, well, the, the safety issue is the BRT lane going through there. And, and I think it is a very significant issue. And, and as I see the plan right now, is, is, is that the city would really look into that, focus on it. Look at the feasibility of it and see what the cost is. I mean, you could go. I mean, you could go above with the, with a, a bridge or underneath or some way through. But i- it is a challenge, but it's also a challenge not having it.
Yeah, um, I know, yeah, Rick Safeston, he was concerned about um promoting bike lanes along Harrison just because of how fast people travel.
Yeah.
Um, so when we say complete street, we are still looking at, you know, um, portions, there may be portions that are appropriate for a bike lane, but not others. Uh, we're really promoting um biking or bike lanes on adjacent streets that are lower speed. It's a more comfortable experience for someone, especially like a family to, um, to bike through the city. So we're really focusing on um improving how people cross Harrison as a cyclist as opposed to traveling up and down Harrison as a commuter corridor. So I think that was his main concern was how much traffic there is and how fast people go. Um, and that not feeling like a safe environment, so.
I share that same concern about a mid-block bike crossing in between the streets on Harrison Boulevard, because Harrison Boulevard is such a thorough, it's such a thoroughfare and artery north and south. There are just no other streets that uh, that accommodate that much traffic. Even Washington Boulevard, because the speed limits are a little bit lower down on Washington. So that would really be hard to put bike lanes or, you know, crosswalks along Harrison Boulevard. I know that it would be very much desirable.
Yeah.
But I think it would.
Yeah, it does require further study, for sure.
Okay, so that's not a proposal. It's just, this is just for our information that you're presenting.
With, with mid-block, it's, it's more of a, a, let's look at it like a recommendation and to.
Because of the distance of, from intersection to intersection. Um, if someone's, or a pedestrian, you know, they typically don't want to walk that far and they'll cross illegally. Um, so we were recommending that we look at a safer way to get across the street. But we, we do need to study that as well.
Thank you.
Okay, um, some of the other transportation items are uh trails connecting up to the BST. Also trails to Weber State University. Uh, and then just on some of the intersections, uh doing those in a way that'll be a little bit safer for pedestrians and bikes.
BST Bonneville Shore Lane Trail is, pretty sure everyone might know that, but just in case.
So uh what's on the screen is a, a rendering, kind of a, a, a before and after a what-if. And, and you'll see there, um, looking at how this property could be de- developed in terms of some mixed use right along the corridor. Uh, really emphasizing that student workforce relationship. Both uh students so close to university, also workforce, BRT so great to get around the city. And so being able to live close and get on the BRT. Uh, through this process, we did identify that there was missing some public open spaces, plazas, parks, things like that. So what the proposal includes a, a plaza with a pedestrian crossing um at Weber State. Um, thirty second, also thirty, thirty-six as well. Uh, this includes some bike lanes um in the area. And then also sidewalks connecting to the surrounding neighborhoods. There's that trail connection that we were talking about. Uh, in, in terms of uh infrastructure, we looked at the city's existing plans for engineering and utilities. And this, this plan just chimes in with that, uh replacing the existing infrastructure that needs to be fixed and upgraded. Uh, encourages that compact development near the stations. And then also including uh tree-lined streets for new development. Um, I like also saving the existing trees as well and the water-wise landscaping. And then, and the part of the zoning would include reducing parking requirements for future development. With the idea that you're living near the station and so we, we need less cars. Uh, looking at implementation, um, there, it's essentially a five-year implementation. So it's definitely quicker than the general plan. And in the implementation part, we have an action and then who is responsible? What's the timeline? What's a, you know, approximate cost? Is it something that staff could do or is it something that you need to go out and get reso, resources for and then also funding? And so in the implementation chapter, we have this broken out uh this way. And this is a, a little bit, this was part of the state code in that uh the desire to see quick changes on, particularly on zoning ordinances. So the implementation includes uh, as I mentioned, planning, particularly the zoning, land use. Housing, um, also looking at transportation item, the, the intersections, the bike lanes, the bike paths. Um, also looking at the plazas. And then working with economic development. This gives you kind of a, a little rendering of some of the specific things that we've identified. Uh, you'll notice on the bike lanes, it just, the key word is feasibility. We're really looking at, you know, what is reasonable. Um, and then working with developers on some of these properties to get that affordable to eighty percent or less area median income. Here's another visual uh towards the, the middle of the plan. The traffic calming at the intersections, uh widened sidewalks on Harrison. Uh. Trails coming in. The mixed use development. And shifting over to Weber State. Promoting where, where they want to do housing near the Wildcat Village. Looking at shared parking in terms of resources, but also ordinances.
Brandon, can I just ask a question? Weber State has been talking about putting in some new student dormitories.
Correct.
Down at, well, have they approached the city about that? Are you aware of the?
Um, yeah, so that's, that is, um, let's see, that's shown here on this plan. So they currently have sports fields.
Right.
Soccer fields. And so those will actually be replaced in this area where the current student housing is located. So they're kind of uh swapping where the student housing is. So the, yeah, the new additional student housing will be right next to what exists just right off Wildcat Village. Yeah, so that's what they're doing. They're, they're swapping it.
Uh, moving south, that Weber State also, Brandon just mentioned some of the new recreation fields, uh parking. Um, com- commercial out on Harrison. Also promoting some public space nodes, some plazas, squares. Uh, as part of this process, we did have the, the public hearing with the planning commission. Uh, the, the, the big concern was the house, promoting the housing near the D Event Center. That's been changed to what you see uh matching the, the Weber State plan. Also, there were comments about accessory dwelling units within the neighborhoods. Um, some of the people didn't know that's already allowed. So it's a little bit of a mute point. Um, we feel that, that all the significant comments have been addressed. And then the planning commission did recommend to the city council for adoption. And staff recommends approval as well. Uh, the next steps are the city council uh meeting, and that is November eighteenth. Uh, and then following that, following adoption by the city council. Then it would go to Wasatch Front Regional Council uh for certification to make sure it meets the state code requirements. And then after that, it moves into the Department of Workforce, and that's where they, they start tracking, just like they do now with the modern income housing plans. Each, each year, Department of Workforce looks at the modern income housing plans for the cities. Asks them what they've done to achieve that, kind of develops a, some reports based on that. And then, of course, the implementation. Any questions, comments at this point? We're here to listen.
Questions for Jake?
Yes, please. I um particularly up around Weber State, I just want to be sure I'm hearing this correctly. Cause I've heard from residents up there and there's still this hanging on concern around multifamily, high-density housing invading uh Country Hills Drive. And to the east, yeah, for the Forest Green Neighborhood.
Yep.
Um, and also up at uh Taylor, Tyler, Taylor and Forty-S sixth. Um, south. So am I hearing correctly that what might have been discussed early on has been revised as a result of public comment? And we won't see any high-density multifamily housing going to those.
That's correct. Yeah, so this um, well, this shows what is reflected on the see, I can go there real fast.
Yeah.
So this reflects the Weber State Master Plan. So um, there was some high-density housing shown near the D Event Center. And that's been corrected. And so it's currently the campus, campus facility, which will follow the Weber State Master Plan.
Okay.
And they don't have any plans for high-density housing there.
Okay, great. Cause that will set a lot of home cities up there for sure.
I think it will help. Uh, for your information, I think it's good to know that universities have their own.
Right.
Jurisdictions. So if they change their mind in a couple of years, the, the city can't necessarily tell them what to do.
No, exactly. And, and the community up there seems to understand that Weber State's an entity into and of themselves. And they can pretty much do what they want. They're kind of their own little kingdom. Um, and they're, they're attuned to that and they, they know how to communicate with the university too, so.
And they, they know the master plan fairly well too, so.
They do, yes. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
So my, my question just goes back to um, how do we measure success or progress in the, the, the key areas that are stated? I mean, my, my concern would be the other thing where the state comes in and says, well, you haven't put enough here. Now we need to force something. Is that, I mean, how does that? Can we measure that number one? And number two, how do, is that a concern that, that somebody, some entity could come in and say, you aren't, you're not doing enough?
Yeah, um, so we reached out to Byron Head. So he's the um, the person at Wasatch Front Regional Council that oversees the stationary plans. And we voiced the concern that you had, you know, how do we measure that? Um, and he said, really, it's, it's about showing progress. With this being a more of like a corridor plan, um, there are areas where it makes sense to increase um, uh, opportunity and affordability. Um, specifically like the thirty-second street uh station area, the thirty-sixth street station area. Those would all count towards our goal of achieving that housing affordability and availability. Um, and there's, there's not like a specific number metric that we have to meet. It's generally moving towards that goal and those uh specific station areas would meet that requirement.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Great questions.
Yeah, really good, Ken.
Thank you.
Yeah, no, this is going to be on the, I think, did we say?
November eighteen.
Um, for uh consideration. Um, just a side note, I think up to this point, Byron told me the other day that we have seventy-five thousand units planned around the station area plan. So it is, the, the states wanting us to, not us in particular, but across all station areas. So that's a lot of housing units to be built.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Thanks, Ben. Right, next on the agenda is the massage business regulations. Christian and Katie, I don't know.
Chair White, members of the council, uh, thank you for this opportunity. Giving me some time to introduce you to this proposed new city ordinance. Um, specific towards massage business licensing. Um, about a, about a year ago or so, we had the Utah Division of Occupation and Professional Licensing reach out to, to us at Ogden City and, and some other cities along the Wasatch Front, I'm sure. Uh, with some concerns about our ordinance or, or lack of ordinance uh specific to massage. Um, so with that, we, we started as a, as a team uh drafting up this ordinance to align with the existing uh state rules and laws. Um, so we could, we could better enforce these at a, at a local level and not have to lie so heavily on, on the state level. Um, we, we, we do acknowledge that, that massage businesses do serve a very valid purpose and, and um service to our citizens. But, but we also have to acknowledge that sometimes they can front um for, for less than desirable activities, um illegal activities, uh prostitution, human trafficking, things of that nature. So that's what this ordinance is in place is to try to vet these applications and, and eliminate those as much as we possibly can. Um, I've list, I've listed on here a couple of the key uh components. I do have a little cheat sheet here with a few additional ones that I'll just run through really quick um to kind of give you an idea of what's in here. Um, we're, we're, we're talking about things that in my mind are, are pretty um just no brainers, to be honest. Um, I understand I'm a little bit biased, but I don't think we're asking anything that's uh too unreasonable. We're talking about things like business hours. Um, these massage establishments can't be open past ten PM, and they can't be open before eight AM. Uh, no patrons allowed after hours, no patrons in any rooms other than massage rooms while receiving massages. No visitors in the room other than, other than in the waiting rooms. Uh, patrons and visitors must be fully clothed, except during a massage. Employees must be fully clothed. Um, we're not going to allow the distribution or, or selling of alcoholic beverages. Um, we need to have all the masseuses and employees with these establishments uh be listed on the business license. Um, no adult-oriented merchandise on site, no unlicensed masseuses. There's a couple of items that need to be listed and, and posted and visibly seen within the establishment. And some of those things are going to be the hours of operation, the services provided, the costs associated with the services provided. Uh, the doppel registration and licenses, ID cards for the masseuses. And then also there is a statement about um human, human trafficking that needs to be uh very visible. Um, they're going to need to keep a roster of the owner and management uh of the establishment with contact information. There needs to be an established main entry door where, where um employees and patrons and masseuses need to, need to use. Um, obviously in, in case of emergency, there may be other exits or entrances into these facilities. And, and depending on size and occupant load, that might be required by building code anyway, but there needs to be one main entrance in and out. Um. We can't, we're not going to allow any beds or mattresses or anything that would even look like living quarters in these establishments. Um, just massage chairs and massage, massage uh beds. And this isn't an all-inclusive list. There's other items um listed in the ordinance as well. Um, the, the, the idea is here that we're gonna, we're gonna protect the ethical and legit businesses by, by distinguishing them from the bad actors. Um, and, and hopefully improve a little bit of the, the, the trust, the public trust in this profession. Uh, we want, we want these establishments to be able to boast and say, we are, we are legit. We did have to go through and be heavily vetted by, by the city and, and background checks and doppel licenses. And, and so we're hoping to give our, a little bit of confidence there. It's also going to help empower us from an enforcement side of things. Um, during the application process, the application will be sent out to uh not just the fire department. fire department, but it'll be sent out to the police department, our planning group, our building group. Uh, so they can look th- these applications over and, and make sure everything looks good. There's no red flags. There's no pending investigations. There's nothing suspicious going on. There are going to be a few exceptions to this city ordinance, and those exceptions are going to fall right in line with our state code. And, and basically, it's going to list a, a whole bunch of, of sole practitioners, things like physicians, nurses, physical therapists. Uh, as you read through that list, you can, you can see that it's not just an exception, meaning, oh, you don't have, you don't have to do anything. Obviously, these professions have their own set of rules and laws and ordinances that they need to abide by also. Um, I, I think it's important to bring up also, in the short time that I've been employed in Ogden City, uh, we have gone through the revocation process for one massage establishment business license um, for, for conducting themselves illegally with, with prostitution and aiding in prostitution. And it's my understanding that there are other active investigations within our own city limits here as well. I feel like I zoomed through that very quickly, and I'm sure I didn't do it justice, um, but um, I am prepared with what uh, answers to any questions that you guys might have about this ordinance proposal.
Any questions?
What kind of input or, or uh, outreach has been done to the legitimate, those that have been defined as legitimate uh, massage um, businesses in the community? And what's your reaction to them?
So the, I, our idea is that a lot of the legitimate massage businesses are, are, are already going through the doppel registration and license process. And we're aligning this ordinance with the state laws so closely that they're going to be doing the, these items that we've requested already anyway. Um, I haven't personally reached out to these massage businesses, but I have heard through representatives at doppel. Um. That within other cities along the Wasatch Front, they're, they're quite excited for this. Um, for, like I mentioned earlier, just for that little badge of honor saying, um, you know, we we are a legitimate business. We've kind of been rung through the wringer, might be the, not quite the term I'm looking for, but they've been very well vetted. And that they can build that public trust that they are a legitimate business.
My, my question is about, I think a lot of massage therapists are, you know, small business owners essentially, maybe uh, doing their own practice and potentially out of their homes. Is that, what kind of requirements might be? I, I mean, are there going to be things that could create barriers to those business owners?
So we are very mindful of that. We do want to make this process, along with any other business license application process, as smooth and, and painless as possible. So we are very mindful of that. There are going to be um, home occupations where, you know, conducting massages out of one's home that they, they may or may not even be exempt from a bit, a city business license altogether. Um, by state law, they would still need to be licensed through doppel and, and, and go through their requirements. But we are being very mindful of how we're affecting those small business owners and trying to make it as smooth and, and seamless as possible.
And like even those that are maybe traveling where they go to, go to the client's location?
Yes, or how call, how come masseuses are going to be exempt from these requirements or a lot of these requirements?
Okay.
Chair. Yeah, with any of these kind of things, um, I had to be educated a little bit on why we needed this. Um. But. My question, I think, relates to if we tighten this up here, does it just get the bad actors just to move or does this? You know, that, that's, you, you want to, you want to make this thing to take that, the bad actors away?
Absolutely.
Does this just move them over there instead of?
Potentially, potentially. And that's something that we're being mindful of as well, because it's not just Ogden City that's coming and, and establishing ordinances like these. It's a lot of our neighboring communities also, Kaseville, uh, Roy, Murray. Uh, Clearfield are some that, that come to mind where we don't want these other cities to put these ordinances into place and then have them just move into Ogden where things might be a little more lax. Um, but, but there is potential for that, sure.
If these mobile uh, people that go make house calls? How do you ever enforce those kind of things?
There's a very, very fine line between uh, what we do in the, in the whole building service division, to be honest. We are a regulatory division where there's a very fine line between being development-friendly, business uh, owner-friendly, uh, construction-friendly, but at that same time, we do have that regulatory mindset where where we need to make sure our public is safe, we need to make sure our citizens are safe, and we need to make sure that our contractors and business owners are following the rules. So how, how, how we enforce that is through inspections more often than not, whether it's a building inspection or a business license inspection. And that's going to be a good chunk of how we enforce with the, with the massage businesses specifically is through those inspections. These, these massage business licenses do need to be renewed annually. And during that annual review, we will have the, the fire department. Um, we have a business license inspector that can go on site and, and kind of poke around and make sure things look the way they should.
Okay, thanks.
Great. Any other questions? I guess just one comment to follow up with that. Uh. I would hope that you would work with the cities that maybe aren't quite there yet with our, and maybe just even sharing our ordinance with them. Like, you didn't mention South Ogden or North Ogden, you know, so I, I would hope that that would be something that you would be able to, to share with them as well.
Yes, ma'am, absolutely.
I mean, I, I don't know, maybe the, I don't know if you have an organization like that, I don't know.
If not, we could, we could, we could definitely do some outreach.
Yeah, so that you don't, that, that, that they're not playing lack.
Exactly, exactly, because our, our, our community does extend us beyond Ogden City boundaries. I recognize that, so it's very important.
Yeah. Great. Any other questions?
Okay.
Thank you. All right, next up is uh, the Ogden Police Department report on what's happening.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Oh, where are we at?
Wherever you want. Uh.
By a microphone.
Where is it?
I'm waiting for my partner.
Wherever there's a mic.
Chair White, counsel, good afternoon. Captain Tim Scott with Ogden Police Department and mainly going to let Lieutenant Glenn Buss here with our, oversees our traffic division uh, present this presentation and then field questions afterwards. Chief Subey wishes he could be here. He's out of town at the International Association Chiefs of Police Conference. Um, but he submitted this transmittal to the councils because he felt that this was a very important topic. He's had conversations with most, if not all of you about concerns that you yourselves have, that your constituents, that residents, that business owners, that visitors all have as it relates to Washington Boulevard. He wanted you to know that these are concerns that he takes very seriously. And that he has uh, been passing those on every single time you have a conversation with Chief Subey. He has a conversation with me and we worked through that. And so this transmittal was to give you a little bit of a highlight of what we have been doing as a department with regards to Washington Boulevard. First of all, we started off the year with a traffic safety plan. This traffic safety plan included a number of different bullet points and, and topics, multifaceted. First of all, we encouraged just good police work from all of our officers, reminding them regularly to be out there, to be visible. Primarily along our major corridors, our Washington Boulevard wall, Harrison, Thirty-Sixth Street, Twelfth Street, things like that. We also have been taking a, a very close look at all of our different factors that, you know, contribute to our crashes and the different complaints that come in. And we've been encouraging our officers to take specific uh, enforcement action on very specific and targeted type of, of violations. In addition to that, we've implemented several specific special projects that relate to these directly, and I'll talk a little bit more about those. Media campaigns, um, social media, we're not trying to hide from any of these incidents or these events. Every time we've been going out and holding these campaigns, we've been warning individuals beforehand. Uh, because we want the public to take some responsibility as well. We want them to say, you know what, as a motorist, I have a responsibility to make sure that I'm doing everything to protect everyone around me. And we've been working a lot with allied agencies. Our priorities have been primarily to speeding, to racing, to uh, crosswalks, pedestrian safety. Um, DUIs, and then obviously a big one being the noise violations.
Yeah.
Could, could I ask her?
Sure.
Um, there are a few of us that are a little concerned about our noise ordinance. It, from your perspective, as a, an officer having to enforce, is our noise ordinance adequate to uh, to give you the tools you need to, to actually mitigate noise?
So, and that was a little bit later on in the presentation, but I'll talk about it now. So historically, we have relied upon the state code as it relates to vehicles and mufflers. The way the state code is written, it is an automatic ticket, which means if you have a violation, the officer writes you a citation, you get it fixed, you take it into the court and that gets dismissed. It doesn't cost you anything. Now, as we've seen an evolution and change in the, the laws, we have seen the state pull back from, say, safety inspections. So previously, if you had, say, a cutout or a bypass device, this was something that you would actually have to turn a knob or, or move a switch and it would cut off your muffler. And so now suddenly you, makes it a lot louder. When you went in for a safety inspection, they may have found that and they wouldn't pass your vehicle for its registration until you had updated that. With that going away, now drivers are more encouraged to, to install illegal modifications on their vehicles. We're also seeing drivers that are registering their vehicles out of, say, Weber County in maybe Box Elder County to avoid emissions requirements. Now nobody is looking at their vehicle. And so that was a big challenge that we faced with regards to noise. We've had on our books the Ogden City Noise Ordinance. But what we realized is there was a provision that very closely mirrored state law. But it had never been adopted into the court's database that would allow us to issue a citation. So the only thing we were able to issue would be for a loud stereo. We've recently worked with our justice court and our prosecutor's office, and we have now added that into the citable offenses for our officers. It is a class B misdemeanor. So the, the prosecutors can choose to um, file the charges either as a class B or a class C. And they can progressively become more um, aggressive in the fines that the prosecutor's office uses for repeat offenders. That just happened within the last couple of months. And so I think what, before we get to the point of taking a look at the um, ordinance and seeing if we need to make changes to it, we need to give that a little bit of time to see if it's having an effect that we intend for that. On uh, our most recent enforcement efforts and blitz, we had six law enforcement agencies, over twenty law enforcement officers here in Ogden City. Uh, and that was a big priority for us, and we asked all of these officers to be utilizing that Ogden City code and hope that it will make some changes and impact. So did that answer your question, Councilman?
It, it does with regards to automobiles, um, a noise effects, you know, people doing garage bands and loud stereos and just making a lot of racket at their house, things of that nature. And, and I know you're not to talk about, not here to talk about that, so I'm, I'm not going to distract you with.
Well, and, and I can look at and talk about that. We, we do get a, a report each month, I get a report each month, I should say, of the, the noise complaints. Um, and there are a few of those. Vehicle noise is probably the largest complaint that we are receiving. The noise ordinance is sufficient to address those types of violations. Um, I oversee not only our traffic officers, but our community policing officers. They all have noise meters, so they can go out and they can actually stand on the, the sidewalk and measure the, the decibel levels and, and make, you know, um, decisions on enforcement from that perspective. And so at that point, I would say that those are effective right now as well. Okay, thanks.
Can I, can I ask about the fines? Are they substantial enough to motivate equipment change in an automobile versus just pay the stop fine and keep driving the noisy vehicle?
They can, they are currently starting at about a hundred dollars, uh, and they can go up to several hundred dollars. Uh, it is a, a fence that I could actually arrest someone for as a class B misdemeanor.
Jail time?
It could potentially result in jail time.
I was joking.
So. So while we haven't gotten to that point, um, our hope is that as we have now rolled this out and we start with some public education, that we can start to see some changes there.
Okay, that'd be good.
Are you asking for a friend? Curious.
I mentioned that we had several large-scale operations. Earlier this year, we've conducted two operations involving crosswalk and pedestrian safety, uh, resulting in over a hundred and twenty-seven contacts. We've had four specific street racing uh, projects, two of which were primarily handled with Ogden City traffic officers, two of which were, were large scale. We brought in allied agencies. Um, each time we had six different law enforcement agencies. We've had drones, we've had unmarked vehicles, uh, resulting in, in over five hundred contacts during those time periods. The nice thing about each of these is they've all been state-funded uh, through grant funding, so there has not been a significant uh, cost to the city there. My traffic officers have been dedicating additional time outside of their regular time uh, to street racing. This is specific to the traffic officers, but we've also been encouraging department-wide uh, recognition and uh, awareness of these different types of violations and asking the officers to take their uncommitted patrol time and go out on the Boulevard and, and make stops. Washington Boulevard, approximately three miles worth of, of length along the city, accounts for about eleven percent of the city geographically, but it accounts for almost forty percent of all traffic stops uh, over the last year or through twenty twenty-five. Um, forty-five percent, forty-five DUIs, about twenty-nine percent of all of our DUI arrests are occurring along Washington Boulevard. As I mentioned, I, I think this quote from Chief Subey is, is uh, very important. He said, "We've heard the community's concerns loud and clear. When street racing and reckless driving threatens safety, we act." Uh, and that is really the message that Chief Subey wishes to, to let each of you know is that he is hearing these concerns and we are working to address those. As I talked a little bit about the city versus state uh, ordinances. Um, those are, are things that we've recently implemented with that change to the, the ordinance. And then we're moving forward, uh, continuing this. We just put together a training that will be going to all of our officers. Chief Subey himself put together a video that is part of that training. Um, he references in there the complaints that you are receiving. He references the flash survey that recently went out from the council and how fifty-four percent of those that responded listed traffic safety is their number one concern. That, that training going to all of our officers will be happening in the next uh, two weeks uh, with that message from chief. As well as um, our twenty twenty-six strategic plan has a lot of different elements that we are planning to implement similar to what we've been doing this year as we work to address these concerns through the next year. Uh, any questions that you have?
Questions?
I just, just uh, appreciate this effort. I, it, it is a common, common thing that I hear. And I love to see that engagement. I, I'm, I'm curious when you're doing those stops and you're having your, the education moment, it seems like there's a lot of, you know, warnings and things like that, which is, which is great. I think that's the first step, but are there, are there locations, like, I know there's the Rocky Mountain Speedway right down and is there, is there a place where kids can go ride, ride or, I've, and do the racing or? I don't know. I mean, I, maybe there's an entrepreneur listening and they, they can see this is might be an opportunity uh, to do something like that, but I don't know if that's, you know, what, how does that conversation go when you're doing the warnings and, and talking about?
There's there's not a lot of commercial locations for them to go.
Right.
Um, as we came into the meeting and and I was sitting next to Monty, he commented to me that in the last month, he has started to hear the racing occur up in Huntsville where he lives. As we have put more pressure on them along the boulevard, they've started to move out to other locations. Um, recently, Weber County had a a shooting out on West Twelfth Street, a little mountain area. That night, we were holding one of these enforcement blitzes and Washington Boulevard was empty. There were very few cars on the boulevard and they had moved out to other locations. Uh, and so it is a problem that keeps getting pushed around, and our hope is that as we continue to hold this enforcement, that maybe they will say, you know what? This is getting too expensive. I don't want to to keep engaging in this and they they change their behavior.
Chair?
Oh, good.
Go ahead. Go ahead, Angela.
Oh, no, I apologize. I just wanted to say thank you so much for all this work, and I just really appreciate all these efforts, and I appreciate um Vice Chair Harris' comment about the ordinance as well, because we've been talking about that for a while and just really appreciate. I can hear, you know, a lot of those things happening on the Washington Boulevard at my house, just a few blocks away, and and so I appreciate it so much.
Yeah, I appreciate this as well. I wonder, has OPD identified any groups? Are there clubs that you can speak to as a group and say, don't come to Ogden, it's not gonna be good for it?
They're informal clubs. A lot of them have social media. Uh, they've privatized their social media because we used to follow them very closely. Um, we've tried to get in on those those social media posts and and they lock them down. If you don't know someone and they don't invite you in, we don't have access to them. We do, I, you know, when I've been out there on each of these blitzes, I make the comment to them, I say, if I drove past your house with my lights and siren on when you're trying to sleep, how would you feel about it? And they all agree that they wouldn't be very happy. And so I I turn it around and I say to them, I'm like, well, what about the people that are out here trying to sleep? Uh, one of the problems that we have, and I and I failed to mention this, aside from the the physical changes to their vehicles, the newer cars where they're all controlled by computers are very easy to change. So in my my patrol vehicle out in the parking lot, I have a little knob that I can change from different modes, from normal to eco to sport. They can take and tune their vehicles such that they can change it from a loud, obnoxious, backfiring um mode to a very quiet legal mode just by changing a dial that quickly. I was on a traffic stop the other day with an individual and and they got done with the traffic stop and they turned their car on and it was loud and obnoxious, and they turned the dial and it immediately brought it back down to legal. So that's another reason why the state code has been difficult for us to enforce is because even without them making a change to their vehicle, physically, they can just turn it back to legal. And so that's where a lot of our officers are actually holding their body cam out the window, recording the loud noise, and then they're making that stop, and then the prosecutor's office is is able to to take action against that. Um, and it's just those steps that we're taking to try and and discourage that behavior.
So in general, does North Ogden experience this as well or any other surrounding communities, or is it just Ogden is a big draw for this?
So yeah, like Lieutenant Bus said, uh oftentimes our enforcement does push that out in some of the other communities, and we recognize that. We've worked with those communities, the chiefs of police in those communities. And as we share their resources, sometimes in our enforcement, uh we'll share enforcement efforts in their areas, but it does. It pushes the that that group out into the northern end of Washington and the Harrisville North Ogden and the Lieutenant Bus mentioned out west and even in the Upper Valley. So we recognize that it does, uh just like with any enforcement effort, it pushes it into the other cities.
And we have, not only have we had these other agencies come and help us, we have gone to help them
That's great.
um with their efforts.
That that made me think about, you know, there's a lot of empty streets in the BDO at night. How much of this has uh enforcement has been centered or focused on BDO activity?
We have traffic officers that go out to BDO every weekend um and work on that. I was I was discussing things with Aaron Osted today uh with different plans that we have in place to address BDO and and how to keep them out of that area as well.
And you do see pop-ups oftentimes, like Lieutenant Bus mentioned with the social media groups, uh the airport area, BDO, Washington Boulevard. So it's not just Washington Boulevard. So uh, you know, we look at all the areas. There's a lot of streets, uh even last year, if you remember, North Monroe had an issue uh or it might have been the year before, so.
That was last year.
Last year, yes. North Mon- yeah, North Monroe had an issue where because that was just a straight street, no uh stop sign. So it's really, once they identify a location, you know, we we track that, we see that, may see that on social media, and generally with the community uh lets us know where they're at, and then we can shift our enforcement, pretty agile at shifting enforcement away from the Washington corridor to other areas of the city. And we recognize there's a lot of areas on the city that could be affected, especially if we uh enforce along Washington.
Okay. Yeah, that that brings up another question that that I I've wondered. I mean, there are ar- areas that seem to be conducive for these things. You know, North Monroe seems to be one of those, you know, ninety-nine foot right away, you know, straight, nothing in the way. Um, now the neighbors, they always say, well, why don't you put a speed bump in here? Why don't you? You know, and and I guess we are putting some kind of a a speed bump up by Weber State. What do they call that?
Tabletop.
Tabletop? Do do those things, are is that a solution? Can we make some kind of arrangement with Public Works and and our plow people to make something like that work that will just make it impractical to speed?
One of the hard parts is a lot of these are state roads. Um, I'm working with Daniel Gillies and and the state right now to see if we can put a raised median in at Riverdale Road in Kiesel, because they like to come and make U-turns right there and do burnouts as they do that. Well, again, Riverdale Road is a state road, so we're waiting on them to to help out and and say, yes, that is something that they would be willing to do.
But North Monroe isn't a state road.
That is true.
And and that's kind of why I ask, and and everybody's got their pocket in their district that they know is is kind of an issue and.
And I recall with that, we worked pretty extensively with some of the city engineers, talking about stop signs, adding a stop sign, and even some of that, we talked about with this with the speed bumps on that road, so.
And we have been in communication with the state about timing of lights. Obviously, if we change the light timing cycles on Washington Boulevard, that slows traffic down. That's not going to change the noise. Um, they still like the noise in between the buildings. They like to hear it bouncing around and things. Uh, but there are those communications that we're having with the state as well.
Well, the little blue light thing really does work. You know, people see it and they they know they're being on candid camera and um, but then they're gone. And then it it seems like it, you know, doesn't work anymore past that. Uh, I guess I ingest, I would say, let's just get a whole bunch of blue lights, put them around the street. Uh, how how well do things like uh your speed is and it's flashing at you when you're speeding? Do those things help?
To an extent. The problem is, is the ones that actually display your speed, some of these individuals want to see how high they can get.
Yeah.
And so a lot of them no longer will show you the the high speeds. It will cut off at about ten miles an hour over the speed and just tell you to slow down. Um, that helps for the individuals that are are not paying attention to their speed.
Yeah.
The ones that are going out there purposely racing, it's not gonna slow them down.
Sure.
Great. I have a question. Some of the businesses that are most impacted by the noise ordinances are Michael Fenton, who's a manager at the Hampton Inn and Hilton Garden Inn. I think I hear most complaints from them. So how are we doing with those businesses? Is there any any uh any progress with them? Because they're losing customers that they in downtown Ogden.
Again, the hope with the this the noise ordinance change and actually issuing the citations for the the violation that they can't just go get signed off, the hope is that that will reduce that. And it's so new that we haven't been able to track the effective effectiveness. I was just looking at a couple that I wrote uh about a month ago, and they're still in the court process. And so I think in the next few months, we'll get some data as to how effective that's being uh as far as that goes.
Yeah, with that flash survey, we looked at a numbers, our with the flash survey, a number of the responses weren't just that, were those downtown hotels and noise coming in and disturbing some of the visitors. So, you know, so definitely that's our focus, and hopefully it's gonna mitigate some of this enforcement.
Yeah. Thank you, Captain Wright. I also just want to add that some of those visitors make posts on their Facebook pages that they'll never come back because they didn't sleep all night long or didn't didn't get to sleep till three o'clock in the morning or something. So that's a real concern to those businesses. So appreciate you taking some action towards settling that.
I can just say that I just talking to people that there 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 has been a noticeable difference, like um, obviously it still persists, but um as as we talk about what's been going on in the enforcement, I think people are taking notice that there is a decrease. So thank you for that.
Um, yeah, I'll say thank you. I've been out talking to people and it amazes me. I thought it would be like in one certain area, but it's citywide where they have that concern. So I appreciate you addressing it.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I think it's moved to Harrison, too.
It's up there.
Well, at least that's what one guy told me.
I did.
Yeah.
All right.
All right.
Other questions? Great.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next on the agenda is um Sustainability Committee Annual Report.
All right. Thank you. Just real quick, wanted to come up here and uh introduce Tara. She is our uh chair. Yeah, we can pull that one up. Is it there? Um, Tara Salee is our chair of the Sustainability Committee, so just wanted to introduce her. She is an environmental engineer at L Three Harris. Um, very smart, very intelligent. She's been doing a great job as our chair, just recently elected by the committee. Um, and so just wanted to to before she got and gives this presentation, just say how proud I am of the committee and all the good work that they've done this year. Uh, we've got really smart people on the Sustainability Committee. It's a really, it's a really good group of people, and they spend a lot of time doing stuff for the Sustainability Committee, for the city, a lot of our, a lot of projects, and um just, I'm just really proud of them. So um just wanted to, you know, before Tara gives the annual report, just again, invite you all to lean on them whenever you need anything, any opinions, any feedback on ordinances or initiatives, or just any questions that you all have. You can feel free to come through, come through me, and then I can relay those questions to the the Sustainability Committee and and get you help with whatever you need. It's a really good group of people. So um with that, I will turn it over to Tara for the annual report, and I know we left the last for best, right? Or the best for last, right?
Hi, everyone. I'm excited to talk to you about all the great things we've been doing with the Ogden Sustainability Committee this year. Uh, so that will get started. Uh, so this year, a big focus has been on getting on the ground. We're going and volunteering at a lot of different public events. Uh, we've maintained subcommittees, and this is where a lot of the work takes place. Our main meetings um tend to be full of bigger pictures, and then we actually get down to the nitty gritty and get things done in those subcommittees. Uh, so currently, we have the Energy Wise Ogden, a recycle subcommittee, and an EV charging and parking subcommittee. Uh, we also this year toured and evaluated the new Ogden Transfer Station Recycling Facility and provided feedback to the city. We attended several different events, including the Intermountain Sustainability Summit, uh Ogden Nature Center Earth Day Events, as well as several of the Twilight Concerts. That was a really big push for us this year. We were trying to get recycling at those Twilight Concerts, which actually, when I joined the committee about two and a half, three years ago, that was kind of one of my main goals, because I thought it was crazy that there wasn't recycling there. Um, so it was really exciting this year. We really pushed that program and got to that at a lot of the different Twilight Concerts. Uh, so I am a member of the Recycling Subcommittee. Um, and we have a group of about five of us. Uh, the recycling efforts at the Twilight Concerts was a big focus. Like I was saying, um, we increased the number of bins at the Twilight Concerts by ten times this year. I, we're looking at creating a a program for them that they can maintain, um, and it's easy to run. Um, and overall, the reception's been really positive. I've gone to a few of these concerts and people are happy that there's recycling there. Um, they'll come up, they'll mention it. Um, it's just been really received really well and gone really well at these events this year, so it's been really exciting. Uh, we created a recycling survey for Twenty-Fifth Street Businesses, uh toured grounds for coffee on Twenty-Fifth Street, because they're very interested in sustainability and working with the Sustainability Committee. Uh, and we had community participate in recycling subcommittee initiatives as well as meetings, so we love to see that community engagement. The EV charging and parking subcommittee uh did some work this year as far as advising Ogden City Planning Department on best practices for residential EV charging requirements as well as locations. Uh, so we prepared a report, uh presented it to the planning director, uh and the subcommittee recommendations were used to inform content in the draft city zoning code update. Uh, this committee was kind of created specifically for that request to help provide some information about EV charging. Uh, we met our goals, and so we're closing the subcommittee down so we can focus on other relevant topics in the coming year. Uh, the Energy Wise Ogden Subcommittee focused on business sector strategies, uh especially with regards to the Energy Wise Ogden Strategic Implementation Plan. Uh, on their site, they had some dated materials, some dated information. So that was a big push this year is to go through and update resources, make sure those resources are still active, uh and had the correct links as well as contacts, so that page is uh more useful to businesses throughout the community. Um, and again, we had community participate in the Energy Wise Subcommittee Initiative, so we saw that engagement there. Challenges for a committee, of course, time. It's a fully volunteer committee. Um, so it's always, you know, um beyond doing the meetings, we're trying to be active at a lot of events, so there's some juggling there for people between uh their regular jobs as well as their volunteer commitments. Uh, funding is another big one. Uh, there's lots of opportunities for low-cost uh initiatives to advance the committee's goals, uh but we don't have a budget at all. Um, so city administration agrees that we could use some a budget, um and they have agreed to propose a five thousand dollars for the fiscal year twenty twenty-seven budget um so that we could take uh increase these uh initiatives and move forward on them. Uh, another challenge is prioritization as well as direction. Uh, there's a lot of different issues that are related to sustainability in Ogden. So it's which ones do we focus on, which ones can we actually gain traction on, and we are really big on actually getting on the ground and doing things in particular. Um, so of course, we're looking at for inputs um from the mayor as well as the city council. We love to get those requests and help in any way we can. Um, we get input through Lorenzo, we're acting as a sustainability coordinator, um and always open to looking at an issue which would be pressing or really could be valuable to dictate uh any policy or any uh initiatives uh related to sustainability. Goals for the upcoming year, uh we're hoping to fill all the committee slots. Uh, we have eight people on our committee right now. We have room for eleven. Uh, so there's three different positions that we're looking to fill up, so we're trying to reach out. Um, at a lot of the events we've been at, people weren't aware that there was an Ogden City Sustainability Committee, and there's been a lot, a very enthusiastic response when uh they have found out. So I think really what we need to do is get that word out, and then we will have people who want to fill those slots. Uh, community engagement is always a goal. We like getting out at those events. We like to tell people that recycling does work. Uh, we're not just throwing it in the trash. That's a huge one that comes up all the time. Uh, but just actually interacting with people and being that uh that information source about all these great things that are happening and could be happening with the city. Uh, we leverage community partnerships, so we're talk to organizations regularly that have sustainability goals um and just looking to increase that and work with local businesses with a emphasis on um Twenty-Fifth Street Businesses, uh especially with that recycling subcommittee. Uh, we want to continue to act as a resource for city councils as well as the mayor on any topics. Um, we're happy to dig into things and, you know, give you information that could help you make decisions if you needed. Uh, and then next year, we also want to establish a natural resource subcommittee. Um, so right now, we're in the process to determine those purposes, objectives, uh potential focus areas that have come up through community suggestions include native plants, air quality, as well as water, um which is a really important issue in our area and across the state. Uh, the recycling subcommittee, um focusing on the Twenty-Fifth Street Businesses, um getting them recycling, um seeing if we could do composting is kind of uh on our minds, uh engaging interest for that. Uh, and then we also just want to continue to expand the recycling services to big community events. such as the Ogden Marathon, Harvest Moon Festival, Ogden Arts Festival, things like that. Uh we want to see people recycling at these events. Uh the Energy Wise is going to continue to pursue goals outlined in the Energy Wise Ogden Strategic Implementation Plan, and they want to create a little cheat sheet for businesses um that we could hand out to them, that list resources, let them know what's available, because there's a lot of different programs um that are provided, and a lot of them are free, and people just don't know about them. I know personally, for my businesses I've worked at, um we've had people come in and do energy evaluations or EcoTreasureHunts.com, and it's free for them to come in and tell us where we can make these efficiency improvements that end up saving the company a lot of money um over time. So just making people aware of this through businesses. Uh that's all I had for you today. Uh thank you, guys, for listening. And do you have any questions?
All right. I have a question, if I might.
Sure.
So I was the one that asked if you would audit the transfer station for their recycling program.
Great.
And uh I I was, I, you said you reported, but you didn't get to the council. You got to this administration, I'm sure, which it needed to be to them, but um you know, prior owners, we suspected that they were taking recycling, but not actually recycling.
Yes.
And uh therefore, they were just able to charge more for the tonnage and make some cash.
Yep.
So so were you in your audit, were you able to verify that recycling was actually being done? And uh that we were kind of getting our money's worth, I guess that's my my question.
Sure, I might pass that one to Lorenzo. I didn't attend that, so.
Okay.
Yeah. Big question. Yeah, uh we went there, yeah, on that request from for me to check it out. And I think it was, you know, it was a good thing that we did. That's a picture from it right there, actually, uh from that tour. And uh to me, it seemed like a good facility. So they've got their uh their sorting facility there that, you know, separates it all out into the different components. As you see right there, that I think, I believe that's all plastics that are baled there, some mixed cardboard in there as well, which is typical. Um but yeah, what they do is, is they actually send it down. Uh there there, there's only so much that's uh that has a market value.
Right.
So not all recyclables have a real market value. Um so those that do are sent down and sold for that market value. Uh and then I think they also send it to another facility down in the Salt Lake area for further sorting, uh to a degree that their facility is not capable of doing. Um so we did feel confident that that they are recycling uh in the manner that we are, we're hoping that they would, so.
Right. That's that's good news. You know, they they promoted themselves that way, and I just thought, well, you know, we have a sustainability committee for a reason. Let's have them take a look. Uh my my second part of my question is, uh you know, I'm I'm all for doing things that actually do good. And uh and so as as part of your process, uh and this is just an ask, if you could, uh when you, when you do your work, you could kind of show the good that things are doing rather than just feeling good, you know, that, and you know the difference, right?
Sure.
We do some things because it just feels good. It doesn't really do anything.
Yep.
Uh and and that's what I think we're, we should be involved with. And that's what our committee, I believe, should refine what we do to make sure that it has a, has an impact that will help us. And so and and that, I think, ought to be the driver.
Yes, no, I completely agree with that. I would love to see more quantifiable outcomes from our things. So like pounds of trash. We have discussed that and definitely is something that's on our minds. Um so not pounds of trash, pounds recycled instead of going to the trash, things like that. Um I know with the current committee, uh everybody is pretty passionate and motivated um to to really do good and not just feel good. Um so definitely focus on that and maybe get some more quantifiable outcomes in the future to present to you next year.
Yeah. And and just to reiterate on that, the committee is really interested in pursuing the things that the city council and the mayor and the administration feel are those important items, right? So if there are things that at the council or administration feels passionate about in terms of things they want to see that have measurable impact, please let the committee know, let me know, and we start working on that as a committee. Uh we would really love that. Great.
Yeah, we like to nerd out when we get some technical documents. That's up our alley for sure.
I just want to thank you for all your work that you're doing. I think um a couple of things, as we're watching um people struggle right now, inflation, uh furloughs, those kind of things. Anything we can do for, from an energy wise or a sustainable energy position with some of these, um there's programs out there that we could be offering some of our residents. I don't know of any, but maybe if you guys hear of any, that would be something that would be um of interest, I'm sure, to people that are struggling right now with being able to pay their due.
Yeah, absolutely.
And I don't know what those are. I don't.
Yeah, it's something that I'm always looking at in 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 my position, and there are some things that I'm working on that hopefully we can get rolling here, hopefully in the next little while. So yeah, we're working on some stuff.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um I I think the other thing is, we're gonna um it's on the consent agenda tonight, but we're uh we're going to uh Angela Chberka is moving off of the Community Renewal Energy Program Committee, whatever they're calling themselves, and we're going to put um Councilmember Graff on there. But it also uh lists you as the thank you for that participation as well.
And I'm happy to chat with you, Councilmember Graff, if you want to just talk about the program and get all up to speed. I'm sure you know a lot about it already, but.
I know, I know some, you know more, Lorenzo. And yeah, I'll make an appointment to get together and uh let you enlighten me.
Perfect. I would love.
As I move toward that role. Thank you.
Yeah, and I would just like to really thank Lorenzo and um all of his time that he spent on that committee. And um also just thank you all for supporting, moving Dave into that position. I know in December, we'll probably have a lot more information about, maybe finally, some um numbers that we can share as well as um more information, hopefully, so that then we could finally make a decision. As I was talking to Dave about it, you know, I just ladies said, you know, obviously, I've been um an advocate for staying at the table and investing the time and effort in the program to find out more. I'm not convinced it's completely the right program for Ogden yet, still, you know, even after all these years. So again, just appreciate the staff members that put in all the time over the years on the project. And then, you know, we might finally get some actual information um at the end of the year. So thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Barton, talk though. Yeah, so we have a few more minutes. I know that um Oh, there he is. If Barton, you want to come up to talk a little bit about the Wall Well, I don't know why I call it Wall Street every day, you know, Wall Avenue corridor plan.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Uh so about eighteen months ago, we engaged in this uh Wall Avenue corridor plan uh in conjunction with UDOT. Uh UDOT is actually funding this corridor study and uh covering the entire length of Wall Avenue. One of our big interests in this is better connect Twenty Fifth Street and downtown with uh the Union Station campus. We know we have big plans for what's going to go on with Union Station, and we see more and more um needs that those two, especially uh getting safe ways for pedestrians to cross and really very comfortable ways that they can feel like that's part of downtown, that that'd be a natural place to go. And uh of course, Wall Avenue is a state highway, and so UDOT has a specific interest in making sure traffic can get through there. And so one of the big goals of this project is to reach a corridor agreement with UDOT. So where we can find that, you know, our interests of gesturing connections, slowing down traffic, making it safe, making it feel, and they're uh full of getting traffic through, or reach a meeting in the minds on those and a consensus on how we can uh both feel good about that. And so we've had Kimberly Horn working hard on doing a lot of traffic studies. Uh we've engaged them several times in discussions on how we can best meet those goals. And uh we're not there yet. We've, we've had lots of discussions. Uh they've asked questions, we've responded. Uh they've asked more questions. So we keep it to respond more. So we're still uh confident that we'll be able to get there. Um we're not there right now. So uh we're going to be presenting information on the plan tonight. And just where we are at this point, uh we're going to ask that you continue that at the end uh and not take uh an action on on specifically stating a preferred alternative at this time. Uh but we would like to have your feedback and and uh we, if you at least feel like we're going on the right direction on that.
Barton, do you have a feel for how much time you're going to need?
Probably at least four, four to six months.
Okay.
Bart, I I made no secret of my uh anxiety level working with UDOT and whether something's actually ever really going to happen with them.
Sentation.
Um I I think my question is
Presentations.
Can you
Sure.
You know, you've you've dealt with those, you know, you've you've worked.
Go ahead and take.
Yes. Are are they in on this deal or just one of those, let's placate the city until we can get them to go away?
Well, we were quite optimistic that they were in on the deal because they approached us, they approached the funding of it. Um and we're still optimistic about that. Um we just haven't got there. I I think there's a lot of technical people that need to talk to technical people and really crunch some numbers to show that what we're proposing uh will work or that we, you know, change this or change that. So I think uh we've had had some very good meetings, and I think uh kind of the upper level management sees that this is a it's more than just a a highway. It's a it's a downtown of our community. I think there's some work in progress, everybody down the road, that's.
Also the, well, I I I guess I'm still really wait to see.
So we can talk about that?
Yeah.
Okay. So you're going to do a a presentation.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Yes, but we're asked, we're not going to ask you to take a an action, but I just to take leave and not to the specific date.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Thanks.
All right.
One comment.
Yep.
Just wanted to do a shout out to Brandon, who just finished a nice run at Ogden Musical Theater as Renfield in Dracula. And I thought it was rather interesting, one post that I saw mentioned these words about his performance, or mented, devoted, yearning.
I could probably add several more, but just great performance, well done. Shout out to Ren.
Great. All right, any other quick comments? All right. We'll see you guys in there.